Okay, we will call this regular meeting of Nevada City Council at order on Monday, April 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Barb Mittman. Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Andy Eric. Dana Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Barb did contact me. She's on her way and will be here shortly. We'll move into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Brian and Dane. No discussion. Council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us into the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration. Motion do approve.
Second.
Steve and Sandy. Any discussion? Council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to the public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. First, we have Greg Northrup from Verbio, who would like to give you an update this evening.
This is Greg Northrup. I'm the President and CEO of Verbio North America and have been a candidate for plenty of great external events that we have on May 6th of this year. Part of my purpose being made was to come and be sure that all of you have a personal invitation to attend the event on May 6th at our facility. It's two years with COVID and a lot of things going on in this world and I'm so proud of our people because of the way we've been able to complete and help along with our contractors as part of this process. But I'm also here to say thank you to the city of Nevada. You guys have been a really wonderful partner to us as we go through this process. I was joking with your city attorney earlier today that we had the joy of going through an adaption process, which I thought was going to be reasonably straightforward. But I can tell you, we are pleased to be members of the city as part of the initial property that we had purchased a couple of years ago. The plant is actually running about three quarters of its capacity, which for us is great in terms of a startup. If you follow the details a little bit, we started operations in December this past year and we've been slowly ramping up production as part of a huge scale-up process, as you can hopefully imagine when you see the operation, you'll get a better sense of that. But we're really pleased with what we've got. I've always been quiet in a sense that I don't want to talk about what we're doing until we actually walk or talk. And a little bit of that's because of the nature of the site that we're at and all the promises that were made. In our case, I want to make sure we're actually doing what we said we were going to do and that we're keeping the promises that we made. We're fortunate to have just a wonderful group of employees working for us and we continue to look for skilled people to fulfill the jobs that we have as the plant's running. And so to that, I just wanted to say thank you. Sometimes we don't take a moment to reach out to those that have been helpful to us. There's a number of other things that you're working on for us in terms of tax abatement, wastewater treatment, plant issues. And I'm very pleased with what we've done and the progress that has been made on those kinds of issues. And I just think it's a great partnership. And so on behalf of all of the Verbio employees, I want to thank you for the work that you've done. To see each of you on May 6th. If you didn't have an invitation, give me the card. I'll make sure you get one because I want to make sure you're all there enjoying the festivities. It should be a wonderful day. I will actually, I'll say, and I don't think, I'm so close to it that it's something to easily understand. Most people don't understand what we're doing as it relates to the production of renewable natural gas at industrial scale. And when I say industrial scale, I mean 7 million gallons of renewable natural gas to be used in compressed natural gas vehicles or liquefied natural gas vehicles. And when we finish the next phase, first quarter of 2023, when we incorporate the ethanol facilities into our operations, we will be doing 19 million gallons of natural gas. That is equal to about 5% of the total production for the United States in 2021. And we've been doing this since 2005. We will quickly, if all goes according to the best laid plans, we will quickly become part of a part of the atmosphere of the US industry in general in the United States to the tune of 15% to 20% of the market share of renewable natural gas that's going to be used in our country. And so that's just very exciting for me. I'm a diverse energy guy. I support electric vehicles. I saw combinations of natural gas C and D vehicles as part of the fleet that we need to operate as a country to be successful as part of our independent. And so you guys have had a role to help us in achieving that objective. And we look forward just to a really long-term relationship with the city. I mean, everything sort of lessons that you have, but really my purpose tonight was just to make sure that you know you had a personal invitation to come to the event. And thank you to the staff.
Thank you. Anything for Greg?
Good. Thank you all.
Thank you for your investment and your partnership, Greg. Anyone else here to speak in the public forum? We now will close the public forum. Move to Old Business A, Prepare Request Number 10 for Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 2 Project from Boon Ring Brothers and the amount of $733,165.09.
Move to approve. Second.
Jason and Dane. Any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
I'm going away.
Sandy.
Operator error.
I knew I'd do this.
Larry's wrong.
We're stuck over here.
Yeah, I got no lights at all.
Don't endanger or defeat me.
Even though they don't, didn't all get registered. So one and two, large one and that large and Ward one. Everybody else registered.
There's only one that missed.
I think that's you, Steve.
That's me. Yes.
They are.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll take us to Old Business B, Prepare Request Number 2 for Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 3 Project from Boon Ring Corporation, the amount of $35,815.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Move to second. Please say.
I didn't want you to go to the next agenda.
Harry broke the machine.
For kicking Mike out of the seat.
I created Greg.
Be approved then.
I think you're voting.
Nor this. We're going to start over. We're going to load the right one. Yep.
Good thing I ate.
Okay. Now you can push your buttons.
I'm still out. I'm still out.
You're still on?
I didn't know when you wrote me in, so I wasn't. I'm in? Okay. Then I'll vote.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is approved. Takes us to C, Ordinance Number 1024, 2021-2022, An Ordinance Amending the City Code of Nevada, Iowa by Adding Chapter 48, Mobile Food Benders, Second Reading.
Move to approve. Second.
Dane and Jason. Any discussion?
We're going to do a roll call vote on this one after you're done, just so you know, because it's still messing up, so.
Then let's do the vote.
Dana Nielsen.
Aye.
Jason Sampson.
Aye.
Steve Skaggs.
Aye.
Sandy Eric.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Or Mittman.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us to D, Resolution Number 74, 2021-2022, Resolution Amending FY 2022-2023 Budget Adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb and Steve. Discussion?
Yeah. See now, just.
Seeing none, we'll have Karen do a roll call.
Yep. Barb Mittman.
Aye.
Steve Skaggs.
Aye.
Brian Hanson.
Aye.
Dana Nielsen.
Aye.
Jason Sampson.
Aye.
Sandy Eric.
Aye.
Dane, that is approved. Takes us to E, Approved Change Order Number 1 for the Jordan Wall 4 Plugging and Abandonment from the Northway Corporation in a decreased amount of $29,092 and final completion extended to May 31st, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy and Jason. Seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead. Help with the buttons.
Go ahead and vote.
Okay, try your buttons. And that is approved. Takes us to New Business A, Resolution Number 75, 2021-2022, Resolution Setting the Time and Place to Conduct a Public Hearing to Consider the Vacation of City Property.
Move to approve. Second.
Jason and Dane. Any discussion? Dane. Okay, shaking her head.
I'm going to roll call.
Okay.
Jason Sampson.
Aye.
Dana Nielsen.
Aye.
Steve Skaggs.
Aye.
Sandy Eric.
Aye.
Brian Hanson.
Aye.
Or Mittman.
Aye.
We're looking at us being versatile. That's approved. Takes us to B, Resolution Number 76, 2021-2022, Resolution Accepting Public Improvements in West F Avenue Subdivision.
Move to approve. Second.
Brian and Dane. Any discussion?
Do we have to try it again? Try the buttons?
I've got three lights on simultaneously. Oh, now it's happy.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us into report, starting with City Administrator.
All right, last couple of weeks, we've had several meetings pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant, some change orders that we needed to discuss. And our monthly meeting had a visit with Main Street America. That was pretty fun and exciting. Got to learn a lot of, a lot of cool things. And she also was very complimentary over our community and the collaboration. So that was really positive to hear. Got to experience the Bean Teen Maze. That was something new that I've never done before. And it would have been really cool to experience something like that one if I was in, when I was in elementary school and things like that. But Crop Walk Foundation, and then this week I'll be at the Rural Summit over in Ames. So it's nice that it's actually close by this year.
Council, anything for Jordan?
Well, I would just comment, we had, part of the Rural Summit today was involved the communities that participated in the Rural Housing Assessment Program that we did participate in. It was a really great workshop and a lot of topics that we've been working on. So glad to have Jordan and Ryan both in attendance.
Now, I stole three Teen Maze things. So if you're interested in looking and keeping or just looking, please help yourselves.
Anything else for Jordan?
Okay, for my report, I'd echo Jordan's comments about the Main Street America visit. I think, wanted to give some kudos to Main Street. There was some really good feedback on the progress that had been made in the last couple of years, especially considering everything else that's gone on since then. We also had the community coffee last weekend. That's a good discussion there. And I think Jordan's going to send out just a standing calendar invite for all of us to accept. So it's just on our calendars. But if you were able to come in May, let him know so we know.
Oh, I don't know. We should do the one in May just because it's pizza pie.
Oh, never mind. Pizza pie lose a day, so.
Yeah.
So we can make sure Marius doesn't put it on the calendar.
June will have the next, next look.
And then otherwise, wanted to give Ryan some kudos for the workshop that was last Monday with the landlords. You know, I think our goal the whole time was to have a collaborative process and kind of stubbed our toes a couple of times trying to make that happen. And I think there was some really good feedback collected and he ran the meeting really well. So I wanted to give him a shout out for that. And I've discussed some of the feedback that I heard from the concerns with folks. And so if you have any additional suggestions yourself, if you've had a chance to collect more feedback from landlords, pass that along because I think they're going to plan to do another one next week.
I sent an email to Ryan today with the one thing I was thinking about still.
Good. Okay. Sounds good. Council reports?
I was thinking about, is this appropriate time for me to take a minute?
Oh, yes, human services.
And Brenda, if you want to pitch in, Sandy, as we think about this, last, at the last meeting, there was a draft left at your desks of the grant application overview for human services funding. And this is our response to creating a new process by which the city funds can actually be used to continue to assist with human services and particularly and specifically with Nevada residents. And so I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, or I wanted to just take a minute to just talk about what that means.
Barb, we don't have a draft.
We had it last time. It was, I was the only one that got one of these.
I, I was wondering if it just went to the committee members, so Jordan, Mayner, Sandy, and Barb, so.
Brenda's in the position, she has the latest draft. She's in the position to send them to you. So this process, we're able to protect our ability to use public funding for human services concerns. With the state auditor and his concern about what was and wasn't okay, private, public, da-da-da-da, this lets us do that. And it also gives us a chance to connect with the Nevada Foundation. So potentially, there could be leverage for additional funding, public-private partnership to support Nevada residents, not just with these three categories of things, but as well as some of the other things. I think I'll let you speak to what we're thinking about with NCRC, the Nevada Community Resource Center, and that childcare chunk that we often, 20,000 plus, were often able to do out of local option tax in prior years. And then I just think, maybe a little bit more about how the Nevada Foundation will, like, it allows the pooling of private funds. If somebody has a project in Nevada that they really appreciate, no, community band, for example, being able to give specifically to that through the Nevada Foundation is a really helpful way, then, then there can be something from the foundation to help distribute that funding. Same thing with something about Main Street or others, as I understand it. So I'm going to turn it over to Brenda. Sandy, listen close and see if I'm missing anything.
So the Nevada Foundation, as you all know, was a great vehicle created really to support donor intent for various specific projects related to the community of Nevada. So as we were considering the challenge you have to make direct investment in human service providers, we kind of came back to the Nevada Foundation. Because they're a 501(c)(3), we have to be very careful with the processes of which we also get dollars out the door. And so we have created an application, and I will make sure you get the most recent version of that, that asks organizations to clearly identify their tax ID, who the contact is, the purpose of the grant in terms of food, shelter, clothing, so basic human things I have to identify which of the areas it qualifies for. They don't want to be very specific in how it supports Nevada citizens and not the greater that it's really focused on Nevada. They'll identify the target of folks there. They'll talk about how they're going to track results, if it's a new program, what's the sustainability of that program. And it also gives us a way for an organization that doesn't have a 501(c)(3) status but has a nonprofit purpose, for them to align with the fiscal sponsor within the community. So that application, when you look at it, you'll see there's references to fiscal sponsors, there's references to needing the IRS designation. Those are all things that, with your partnership with the foundation, that will track and monitor that. So what we're proposing is that after the starting of fiscal year, the council will take action to move a specific amount of money to the Nevada Foundation's into the Human Services Fund. Then what we'll do once you take that action, if you choose to do so, we will form a grant committee. So we'll make a public announcement through the channels here at the city to past recipients of your awards, to let them know they've got a little over a month to fill out an application. And it will take up to a month to review those. But what we're proposing is a committee that would be representatives from the foundation and a couple of representatives from the council to score those, all track and monitor that they've got all their documentation in place. We'll let the council and the foundation actually evaluate that with a matrix, so you're not just randomly giving it a score. So we tried to take the subjective components out of it. We'll ask folks where other fundings coming in to support the project. You'll see all that data. And then that committee will then make a recommendation to the Nevada Foundation Board of Directors, which will then act on the dollars we will award up to probably almost all of it. I might suggest a recommendation to the board that give ourselves a little room, because sometimes things come up that aren't on a perfect yearly schedule, that it would be nice to be able to react to a need if we need to. And we can always go back to the application as a fiscal year is getting close, if we haven't used that. So there, we bring the, the foundation board and member here at the foundation board. I think everybody there is comfortable. We're probably level stuff as we go through this first round together. I think everybody's intent is we want to make sure those dollars are out, doing good things to those that need it most in the community. So that's really where we're at with, with the funds you decide, if you choose to do so, to award to the foundation after the starting of fiscal year in shelter, clothing, and food. So one of the things that you've awarded in the past is, is related to kind of the childcare months. And do you want, I thought it's kind of been, do you want me to talk a little bit about that?
Either way, so Brian's been at that table too, talking for a long time about the concerns when you have a need like NCRC that takes a big hunk of that human services budget, but serves a very different mission than some of those other groups. But it's also an important mission, especially when the top two things handling economic development in the state are housing and childcare. So it's something that definitely has an economic development component. The state has fewer strings with economic development type dispersments. So we were looking at doing more of a workforce fund that can be used innovatively as we go. So maybe start this year, obviously, NCRC would qualify. But really then looking to, can we do second and third shift childcare somehow, the pilot program, other, other ways we can serve those needs that may not be met. And then hopefully be able to leverage more private dollars once we have a proof of concept for more of a public-private partnership for, for workforce-type childcare solutions in the community. So that would probably be facilitated by another group such as NEDC or something like that. So we need to figure out parameters around, around how to do that. But that, that was my thought to, to separate those two things. And then you heard about the food, clothing, shelter. That was some of the criteria we were hearing from all of you. If, if you want different criteria, obviously, the six of you get to make that call if, if that needs to be broadened. But that was kind of the feedback we've been hearing. But really trying to take the concerns we've had through the years, ever since I first came to this diocese about 12 years ago, I heard about the city administrative review process and the ad hoc process for the things the council did not like the processes that were used. So we revamped the administrative review last, last summer. This is our chance to revamp human services. So we definitely want feedback as, as we go. But I wanted to make sure everybody had an update on the proposal. Obviously, if everyone's comfortable, then our attorney will be helping us make sure all of the agreements are drafted appropriately to, to actually pull the trigger on that at a future meeting and take official action.
In the meantime, I'll make sure I route to Karen or Jordan the actual current versions of the, the grant application. But the one thing I would also tell you as part of our process, we'll have them all sign an agreement as well, that they're taking their funds and using them for the desired purpose. We'll have a follow-up report on the backside of when they've utilized all their funds. And then we'll use that data to actually prepare a report to the council. Because I'm sure you may hear what some of the funds were used for and how they're being utilized. But I also think it's important that you have a, as a look as a whole, how people were impacted with the dollars who committed to the fund. So stay posted, but I will get that application. I'll probably go back and sit and do it right now. So any questions from me related to human services fund and what we're proposing? But I would say the foundation is very supportive and wants to be a good partner on this.
Any feedback, any council members have about what you heard?
Just curious, what is our suggested amount that we are planning on putting into that fund?
Yeah, and that, that can obviously be changed by all of you too. So I think in the budget that was approved for the human services piece was 40,000, if I remember right, was the number that was, that was approved. You can amend that because there are plenty of local option reserves there to move it, the types of dollars we're talking. But we talked about doing 25 for the workforce for a total of 65 between the two, which would be an increase over, over last year. But again, it's up to all of you if you think those numbers are sufficient or not.
You're saying 25 for the, the economic development?
Yeah, childcare, workforce.
And then another 40.
And 40 for human services is what's currently there.
I like the sound of that.
14,000 more than last year. Last year was around 51.
Yep. I think that's good.
Just heard that Boys and Girls Club is going to do K-8 starting this summer and into the school year next. So there'll be more places for the younger ones come next, you know, this summer and next fall. So that's, that's a.
They're down to one third grade this year.
Yeah, they went down to third. They had been 5'8", and then they creeped to four. And now they're, this year they're third grade. And so they're going to go to that kindergarten level. So they're, they're trying to step in and do what they can as well to help encourage daytime childcare. So it's that second and third shift may be that, the new ground that we're going to need to plow.
Having never seen any of the requests in the past, and part of it's just the way things have happened with COVID and all, I would be curious, I have no idea about the request, what kind of number are we talking about for past requests? Are we close or, or in the realm of the possibilities?
14,000 over this last year.
It was awarded last year. In the past, we had been, was it, Karen, if we went back five or six years, was it 75?
It was.
It was only a couple of years that it was 75. The rest has always been 55 since I've been here anyway.
Okay, so it went up just for a couple of years in between.
Does that match requests then, too?
Requests were higher.
Requests were always higher than what we gave.
I know, to some degree. But is it sort of seemingly carrying, carrying the load for the?
And it depends on the criteria you choose, because there are other groups that fall outside of, of the either workforce or food, clothing, shelter. So I think if you were to take those groups out, it probably is close.
Well, it seems like a fair start, I think, what's been proposed.
I like the structure to the, to the requests and the giving system. I think that's good.
I also like the opportunity, for those that aren't in our lineup of what's appropriate for public funding, that then they are in the, under the eyes of the foundation that will see there's perhaps another source of funding for them. So I like that.
What you all could do is look through the groups that have historically been awarded, just to go through yourself with a criteria and make sure you all think that's on track for the definition. Because we need to define, we need to define the use for the fund before it's awarded.
Right. Because I can think quite a few that have got money in the past that won't qualify for this new criteria. But I'm. but I'm totally okay with that, if, you know.
There's things like legal aid, PTA, community band, those are just.
I guess that could fall in there maybe, but.
I just like the ability that we'll have to get the data back on what it impacts.
Yeah. They get a hold of them a little more accountable.
Allowing it to be done where they don't award it just on an annual cycle because what if a refrigerator breaks for one of our foods places and need to buy a refrigerator many years? So there will be those things that pop up that it would be good to have the ability to respond to as well.
The last local option tax report that, this sheet that's in my hand that I just passed to Sandy, was in the, the February 14th packet, when we were, we, that's the, that's the meeting that we approved that 40,000. And the list of past recipients is there, as well as the past, the, the actual dollar figures spent under human services distributions, if that's helpful. It was in, that is in that meeting packet.
Okay, so that'll be your homework to review the criteria, make sure you feel comfortable on the dollar amount. If you have any feedback of the process, in the meantime, let us know because we want to make sure that's incorporated in whatever Erin is drafting.
Just one more question, what, what was the most recent auditors concerned with this or not concerned?
I, I will tell you that the last conversation I had with them, they, they will be scrutinizing this. And even if we have an agreement with Nevada Foundation, all those boxes still need to be checked. And those agreements, I mean, the agreements have to be better than, I, because I sent them the agreements that we had in place for our process before. And.
It wasn't.
She wouldn't tell me, no, they didn't like them.
Yeah.
But they, she basically said that was not good enough. And our agreements were even more than what's being proposed right now.
Yeah, so, so the backstory is, the auditor's opinion was when they started targeting cities and Nevada was not alone, we had several other communities with the same issues. And the auditor's opinion was requiring a formal 2080 with each entity that the cities were partnering with. And that's, I think, when, when the auditor came in and said that our agreements were not sufficient because we didn't have a 2080 that was registered with the state. They have, I think you've seen the updated opinion from the Attorney General's Office that now, or from the state auditor's office, that now says you can have the agreements and there's specific criteria that you have to meet. And just because we're outsourcing this, I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea because I think it takes some of the maybe political pressure off of the council. But to Karen's point, we still have to check those boxes. And I have done a first review of the recipient agreement already and, and added in a lot of the language that the city previously had with their recipient, recipient. So we're still going to have to be, I think we're in a, in a trial phase with this, frankly, with the auditor. We just had another situation with another community where they said, well, yes, you can technically have these agreements, but we don't think that's the end of the conversation. So I, I just, we're in a gray area. We're going to, I think, you know, we're doing what we can with what we, with the opinion that we, is currently the most recent opinion. But I'm not going to be surprised if we're talking about this again next year. So just everyone knows.
We're inching along, thank you.
And we might be talking about our own forms and everything anyway.
Yeah, for sure.
They're just.
There's mud.
Yep, yes.
Anything else on that topic?
Thank you.
Hey, other council reports? Is there any, any DC update, Brenda? Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
No, there's some issues at the fire station. I'll work with Ryan on the sewer service, but.
Yeah, and then Ray, do you want to cut on up and do your report?
We discovered a pretty substantial sewer problem that's been at the fire station on Wednesday. We had sewer backing up in the pits, the floor drains, the showers. We, the city team did a great job of backing out the pumps and the pits and working with Redo Rudy to kind of jet cycle them through the, they didn't run a camera through the line. And the sewer line was a three-inch cast iron pipe that has been in place for 46 years. While we renovated everything at the station, the underground, obviously, we didn't touch. So we're still seeing some issues, like when you run drains, flush toilets, wash gear, you can get some backup coming out of the showers. It's nothing that we haven't been able to manage, but we got to fix it. And. Oh, we've, we're looking at this, we're looking at this, we're running this through the station and the service for about four weeks and dig up concrete and put new sewer line in. Doesn't sound very appealing, sounds pretty expensive. The other option was to put a liner in, they would go in and clean out the cast iron pipe, put a liner in. The bottom number was around 40,000, the top number they thought was about 60,000. And then Mike, we're talking about other options like boring underneath and creating a whole new sewer system. But we're at the beginning phase of this, but we believe that our, you know, 46-year-old building has had a point where we, we got to do something about it. So we'll, we'll keep you posted, but certainly wasn't the news we were planning Wednesday. So, and then that looks wrong. We did burn the prairie burn at the water plant. It worked really well on Saturday. And the folks out at the water plant were really helpful in manning the boundaries. And that was the first time in eight years we've done that E-section. So we were pretty happy to get that out with the way conditions are going to be this summer and stuff. It's pretty substantial risk to have that dry prairie ground not burnt, so.
What do you think, Ray?
I'm done inspection though, Saturday.
Right, yeah, I had a gentleman call me at home that, I think it was like 11:30 and asked me to come inspect this food truck in 30 minutes. So, I mean, you got to do what you got to do. We're going to have the line that it's important, that we think it's important to do it. So we did it. And I did pay for some ice cream for our folks. And I will tell you, it's pretty darn good ice cream. So.
Frozen in time, right?
Yeah, yeah, my grandson said, Papa, this is the best ice cream I've ever had. So that's, I'm from a six-year-old, so.
Twelve-year-old approved also at my house.
Oh, they know.
Good evening, you have my report. It's all I got, if you've got any questions or anything. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Brandis, do you have anything to add? Okay, Karen?
Just, this is training month. I was at Iowa Employment Conference last week and saw a couple of good presentations and presenters. And then next week is I-muff away, so I'll be gone a couple of days next week too. And just trying to get things wrapped up, getting close to end of the year and coming quick.
Counsel, anything for Karen? Erin?
You have our monthly report, an update on all of our projects. And I don't have anything to add beyond that. I do have to tell you, today I served my civic duty and went to, did jury duty today. And for the first time, I've, I've done this several times, I was lucky enough to get selected for the jury. So I'm pretty much out all week and maybe in the next week. But I thought I had my out when the, when the defense attorney indicated that he was from Brick Gentry. And when I, I told them that I, I knew your partners very well from Nevada, but it didn't work.
Was it Billy Mallory?
Said what?
Billy Mallory?
I, I couldn't cast their names, shorter guy, short stout, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and then my other out was when the, when the other attorney was questioning me. And they always ask you if they, if we, if we know each other. And it dawned on me towards the end of it, I had crossed paths with him in a civil injury lawsuit from my days back in Oscealoosa. I'd left there 15 years and it was a slip and fall on a, on a bike on the trail. Anyway, he was the attorney for them. I thought, sure, I'd get out of it, but I did something and convinced them they wanted me. Anyway, I would be out all week.
You guys see some fireworks, play that.
Hey, Erin?
Nothing for me.
Anything else from council? And then we'll move into the closed session here, which then we'll disconnect the video and audio from the Zoom. But it's closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51i to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. Second, you Barb and Dane?
Vote.
Vote with your button.
So they're all three lit up.
And we are in closed session, so we'll go ahead and get everything secured.
You missed it.
Yeah, I just came to say sorry, it's late.
That's okay, you must be saying nice things about you, so.
Check the recording.
This was 10 days ago.
Yeah. It's going to come back soon.
You got to end this.